Not yet. Are we now? Oh, okay. All right. We'll begin by having a moment of silence, please. We'll now call the meeting to order and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Ken Harrison Edwards.
Here.
Councilwoman Sherri Rogers.
Here.
Councilwoman Stephen White. Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Here.
Councilwoman Herb Curtis. City manager, interim city manager and finance manager Jim Solbrach.
Here.
City Attorney Brian Bailey. Chief Mike Posey.
Here.
Chief Jimmy Settle.
Here.
Building code zoning enforcement officer Marty Lewis.
Yeah.
Public Works Director Mike Sterrett.
Yes.
Sanitary Director Dee Evans.
Okay, under visitor's section, they.
They were supposed to attend. She just wanted you all to be aware of what's going on and also in this packet, you have the letter and the law that she gave us to take care of that.
Okay.
So I'll take the pictures back when we're done. It was here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next you have the minutes from the regular and special session in your packet. There's no additions or corrections. I'll entertain a motion to accept as distributed.
I certainly.
Second. It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, next we have, uh, reports of city boards, commissions and outside agencies. And you have a listing of all of the meetings that are gonna take place through the month of June. And the next one is Neighborhood Watch, uh, which will be Wednesday, June 4th at 6:00 PM at the Fire Department. On the menu is hot dogs, so make sure you come. Okay, and known vacancies, Board of Zoning Appeals, one position and one alternate. And. Uh, sanitary board of directors report. Hi Dee.
So I have my report. It's pretty lengthy. I won't really go into that whole lot. Uh, some of it may overlap with Mike Sterrett because we tend to work on those and that stuff together, so. Um, some of it may be a little bit repetitive, but, uh, one thing I will go over is the plant report that Mr. Barnett submitted. And I did include it in your packet. They've been working really hard down there to identify several things that were deficient or missing or weren't working. And some of the things, major things that they have corrected just within the last thirty, twenty-five days is our membrane filter system that wasn't operational before they got there. And it's up to now operational and a grid chamber that hasn't been usable for several years is now operational. And we have changed things with the haulers that, few haulers that bring in sewer to the plant. Um, it was more detrimental to have them bring it actually into the plant itself than it less to have them to bring it to a a station outside of the plant. And so we've changed it. And they're bringing it to one of the pump stations outside of the plant and it's easier to treat that way and much easier on the plant that way. Another thing they're doing is, um, we're getting ready to replace all the UV bolts. And there's two banks of those, about a hundred and sixty bolts per bank. And those are supposed to be completely clear and that'll be changed for probably five years at least. Could be changed every, let's say, ten to fifteen months. And so we're getting estimates on those to get ready to replace. And that'll probably be about sixteen thousand dollars to replace one bank of those. But that'll make a big, big difference in how our plant, you know, people. They did replace a few because we had a few on hand and, and those are the main things trying to fix that UV, you know. And some voltage things that'll make a big difference. Except these two guys that are working down there have been a real asset to things, um, in addition to those operators that are working down. They're working really hard with those three operators, so it might give a difference in taking direction. We're doing everything we can to save on this reason which it'd be now and it makes a difference. I look out there. Um, as far as the, the line of work that goes on, let's, I could address any of that, what you guys question you might have on that. We're very, very busy, um, out on the lines. There's been some spills falling in and we've seen a lot more of those because they weren't falling before. And now we're working with DEP and have a very good relationship with them and know how and when and what we need to do when they're falling in and what we need to do with those ones that are falling. So you'll see a lot of those and maybe you afford it, you might afford each one so you can see the flows and how they're doing.
What about the open positions at the plant?
Um, I think for right now, um, we're just kinda holding off until we get at least the, uh, chief operator. And, and there's an offer out there to him and he is to, I don't know, by the thirtieth of June. And once that position is filled, I think we'll move forward with some of the patients down. For now, those two guys that are there in addition to the three operators seem to be doing things. Okay. Uh, can you give me the financials there that tell you that, uh, hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three fifty-five for this past month. And your, uh, stormwater charge is four two thousand six hundred and eleven seventy-two. Got any questions? I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, our meeting is next Monday if we're good.
What is the percentage that collections are coming in at?
Um, this month it was a little bit lower than it has been. I'm gonna say eighty-nine, ninety-six percent, like this last month. It fluctuates greatly with how much I spend, how much time I spend on the plant, really. That makes the biggest difference. And if I want to find the thing, honestly, I want to see a huge difference.
I don't want you calling me. Any questions for Dee?
Does the budget look like it's on track?
I think so. Uh, we're working on that at Grace Field. It's last week. We have something with them. Within the next week, so present, now for when you go over it.
Thank you.
Yeah. He likes those sounds. Yeah, he's learning something in his brain.
Okay, finance report.
All right. I'll keep this relatively short. Um. It's a mostly uneventful month. We're still positioning for a strong finish at the end of the year. Um, one thing that I wanna share with you, um, just because this is something I'm gonna probably bring up in a couple of months and it's gonna be a really big change and I don't wanna blindside you with it then, um, is, uh, I'm looking very seriously at changing, um, third-party payroll processing providers. Um, we've been having ongoing issues with ADP for the last couple of years. Um, mostly it's been, um, their ability to maintain our vacation time, their ability to get paid differentials correct, which is like how we pay fifteen more cents in the evening and twenty-five more cents overnight and that sort of thing. Um, but then in the last couple of months, uh, I think the situation has escalated. Um, where direct deposits are not hitting in the same timely way that they used to. Um, we had one month when they said they couldn't process direct deposits at all, so they sent paper checks. We've just had ongoing issues that have elevated, um, especially in the last three months. Uh, and honestly, if I had the time to dedicate to it, I'd switch tomorrow. Um, but I don't have the time to dedicate to switching, so, but it is something that I'm probably gonna bring to you within the next three months. I still think it's in the city's best interest to maintain a third-party payroll provider. But I'm gonna be looking at what the options are in the next couple of months and, and bringing you some kind of recommendation on that. Um, a new contract to enter. Um, so if you have any recommendations, I'm happy to hear them. But it's, uh, I spent, I think, five hours on the phone today with ADP, so that was most of my day. Other than that, uh, if you wanna jump to page twenty-two in your packet and check out vacant structures, um, you can tell it was another billing quarter because it was a really great month for vacant structures. And there's seven thousand fifty dollars there that you can transfer to the vacant structures fund. Fifty. Seven zero five zero.
Is there a motion to make that transfer to the vacant structures fund?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And you have a check detail report on page twenty-three.
Any questions about the check detail?
Yes. You're welcome.
I made it quick. Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is that it, Joe?
For finance, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, next, any questions about the street department report?
Where's your front? Do you know which is on down? Yeah, it's a little bit, you have to go back there.
What about Bank Alley? Where are we with that?
Every time we get ready to go over and, and to die in the post office, water levels comes up in, in, in West Worth that I cannot find. Just see a guy coming out. Soon as the levels get down again like it was about four, four days ago. And I can see where that guy's coming out and prove it to them and we're ready to put it back together, but, uh, well, they were ready for the back there and we need to get them and try and get that sewer put into the sewer instead of the dog rent.
I do have a question. Um, the water company has, uh, the water company has torn up a few streets and do they have any intentions of repairing those?
I do not know. There's some of the things that, um, I'm gonna address with Mr. Bailey is because the excavation permits are in line. When they, they throw them out there under emergency's, then they don't fill out their excavation permits, so they're not getting back to me. So there is some places out in the red that I don't know if they're, don't who, the person who doesn't own them, but I probably need to get with Mr. Bailey, like he said, Eric Water, uh, knock on the doors they had, they needed to do.
Well, the one there around the Gomart, is that leaking again?
Uh, that right there belongs, and let's try to pass a buck that that road right there belongs to State Road.
Right.
They are fussing about it whether it's water or whether whatever it is. So that's the water company and, uh, State Road right now. And I'm assuming it's probably back at the same valve.
Right.
The only thing they've done at the time, they replaced some bolts in there. Something that they never repaired about, they just replaced some bolts and put it back there.
So Court Street, where they had, the water company had, remember that, um, geyser? Yeah.
Uh, talked to, uh, Tommy Alltime, and that company has kept pushing him back to get that, uh, repaired. And I also told him at the time they were supposed to do that, we got about another hundred feet, which is, uh, waiting on them to give me the estimate before we can take the rest of it up to the Columbia Club and see what that's gonna cost us to do that. And I'll bring it back to you guys, but they put the water company off and it's, uh, Washington State Pay.
Oh, so the water company is trying to make a mess.
Yes, they're gonna take care of it, but Washington State maybe, so, as a tip. Dragging a fee.
Thank you. Thanks for checking those things out.
You're staying on top of things.
I know we discussed, uh, patching earlier today. Uh, what about weed eating?
What's that?
What about weed eating along Montgomery, in that area?
Uh, we, well, we will, we will be using the brush on down through there then.
Okay.
Uh, and not trying to put this off, but, you know, as we, we spoke on it, on the lines and stuff, we are just literally backed up on lines. We have found, uh, lines that's been leaking for multiple years. Trying to get those done and take care of those to keep the, the off of us. Got a good working relationship with them and I think after we get the other half done on North River and another one that's down in B. Building, we should be able to get back on this other thing. Today I tried to do two of them and it just wasn't working out that well.
That was one of my concerns, I think I expressed when the, we were talking about the mergers being able to handle both sewer and street maintenance at the same time.
Yeah, I think we're still finding our stride with it. Um, and I won't lie, I think it's gonna take a couple more weeks, a couple more months, but.
State of some of the sewer things.
Yeah.
Well, we've lost people at the sanitary board.
Yeah, I'm down one person in the street department also. And to be honest with you guys, looked and we just, no one wants to go to work.
Yeah.
No one wants to work, so.
I think they are changing some of the requirements for some programs from the federal government, so maybe that'll help us out.
What was that, Debbie?
I said the federal government and the state are looking at work requirements for programs now. Maybe that'll help us out a little bit.
That would be great. Maybe.
Okay, any other questions for Mike? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, police department report.
What do I add that's not in there is we just look for, our base only receives one advocate, so we don't waste our time testing and we're, we're personally, we have two buildings and we don't wanna waste money and time if you want first plan.
Yep. Questions for Chief Posey?
Thank you for being here, Lindsay. Appreciate it.
And are there any questions for Lindsay?
I appreciate it. I worry about you sometimes out there. I'm not gonna lie.
It looks like you're making a huge difference in what we're seeing from your reports. And by the way, we appreciate your reports. But, and you appreciate the work that you're doing. You're actually getting people on the streets and giving them assistance and we appreciate it. Slow in terms of what, what he's not doing with as many people, so I've been doing more outreach, like, I went to which one very personally and I'm just studying how to build and like that and that. Much like climate reduction, like maybe that. Seeing people come out of, you know, whatever. Are you working with some people at the, um, Overeyn Barton Plaza, the recovery center?
Yes.
Have you known, you saw all the activities that they have. I've posted actually on, on the bulletin board. Um, making a schedule of events. They have some quality events going on, everything. Yes.
I know that.
Yeah. And the sound, that, that was, was good. A lot of people that come in for Lindsay have spoke very highly of her. In short.
You know, absolutely.
Thank you. I think it's a wonderful addition. Um, and thank you.
Yeah, it's nice to have that resource.
It is, and, uh, not a lot of towns have that.
Okay, next, fire department report.
I don't have anything else. Fourth of July is coming up, so I think everything's ready to go for that. Fire works you off. Then there's, uh, when they're wanting to resign up, stuff, who do they get to hold up?
Becca?
Becca.
Uh-huh.
Becca.
Becca, okay.
Yeah, we've been down to her driveway, haven't we?
Oh, yeah. No, I was told two weeks for that. And may I use your kitchen Wednesday evening after four?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
One storm after another.
It's been, it's my report. I think I've got another thirty-five, forty-four that, that.
Wow.
Right.
Had eighteen calls last Friday, like, like two in the morning, probably got the last truck back and say, trees down, lines down.
Rex. That's crazy.
I was talking to Mike. We've had an increase of wrecks out thirty-three there at the Berlin intersection marketplace. That's pretty bad. Trying to talk to Mike and we just troll that just a little bit. And it's four lane, but it didn't send it.
Is that because of the congestion that exists out there?
I just think there's getting to be a lot more traffic and people just don't, they're just not paying attention to that stoplight. Like, they're running the lights like crazy. Everybody's in a hurry.
Weekends and holidays, that, that's just terrible. They're backed up through both lights always.
It's best to get through there sometimes.
It's an increase. It seems like an increase in traffic.
Well, you also have new business opened up out there.
True.
Too. That's also bringing more traffic off the interstate.
Most of them seem like, most are bad direction westbound coming in. Strong traffic training.
Okay, any other questions for Chief Settle? Thank you. Building code zoning.
The guys that had the guys were out there working on painting the, uh, poles that were in the plaza.
Yeah, it looks really.
Saw that.
Yeah, hopefully they got them fit and say, they figured it was gonna be done in April, February.
And they were also doing the lock boxes too.
Yeah, they're, yeah, but they won't get it all this today. They're gonna get around and do all those, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. It looks really nice.
Yeah, at first we were told we couldn't touch them.
Right.
Yeah, I think they're looking a lot like.
And you know, I, I know in a lot of cities, they do the whole, the whole thing and the light mechanism, but I really don't mind having the lights itself being, um, the yellow, orange. I think it, it calls attention to it. I think it's a safety factor. What do you think, Marty?
I agree. That's last night or chapter one.
Really? You know, it's all. Thank you, Marty. Um, I appreciate that.
The lights, the actual lights that are out there, can we get those working? Like the whole lights that.
Streetlights.
Street.
There's, when we know which ones aren't working, there's a whole list that has been sent over, I think, Caffey does now. It's actually emails them over to Mon Power. I know there was an ongoing rest, but if there's one specifically in the middle.
Now, these are the ones out of, where they just painted poles.
Oh.
At the ridge.
Those are his cover lights you're talking about out there, ones over the street. I think we gotta get through State Road on those and try to get them to early. Electrics shut off on that.
Well, it needs to turn back on because that is, you know, kind of a dangerous intersection.
If you're talking about the ones that hangs out and they look like a, yeah, those probably won't.
Well, if they're not gonna work, then take them down. Leave the pole, we take the light off.
I can email pretty some jackin' down there.
Mike, I call Sean Lizzy. And I will say there, speaking of the, the lights, there are several, several sets of lights out. We need to put some pressure on the power company to get this fixed. What was that guy's name that came in? On me? Was it Tom?
James.
James.
James, he's the one coming in here at night.
Yeah. No, he's still there.
Yeah.
Maybe get ahold of him.
I don't know that he is.
I know. We had a lady coming.
I, I think he's been replaced, but I, I have her number too. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
They did some, some big consolidation, like laid off a bunch of people.
It's a female.
Yeah, yeah. And I've talked to her once.
I have a call.
I saw Mon Power page yesterday have to replace some lights.
Another one at Forth and Spring where you make that turn, it's out and that's, that's a little dangerous right now.
Yes, it is. I did have somebody report that to me.
We'd like to have one of the new.
Fourth of spring.
Okay, anything on the animal control program?
Yeah, there's a report here. We've got a report in there.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, probably the, this, these numbers were pretty much over in towards the focus, not at least.
Lynn Avenue had a problem.
Yeah, she, she was in that area, but about coming, W. Two, like the Terrace Avenue, Winter Avenue area. And two, two other areas, oh, I think down by Mulberry and all of them. These were next, after she crashed in it, they were placed for a couple of weeks. The cats are getting smart.
Yeah, they know.
So then she died in the, and, and, but they still modify it after.
And vultures, what was the total number you told me?
We are, hang on, he just said today. Two hundred and twenty-four.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, even worse than yours.
Good.
Not edible.
I noticed two at Jane Lou yesterday.
He is paying attention.
Questions for Marty?
Thank you, Marty.
Thanks. Okay, city attorney report. Brian isn't here. Did you have anything on his behalf, Joe, or no?
I don't. Um, he sent some notes to the council, uh, I think over the weekend, and I'll be talking about those under new business just a little bit. And I think if we have anything in particular for him, he said he might be available by phone calls early at six-thirty, but otherwise.
Fifty to seventy minutes.
Oh, okay, well. We're open and I'll last that long, so. But no, I don't have anything particularly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City clerk's report in the packet. And interim city manager's report.
Yeah. Um. I just have a couple of things to make you aware of. Um, the Sons of the American Legion are gonna be at McPhillia Cemetery on June seventh. Um. Uh, let's see. Um, I'll be coordinating with, with Mike and the town of Jane Lou, um, to take the street sweeper out to Jane Lou again and help them out. We, we do bill them for that. Um, and then, uh, just I, I sat down underneath your packets, paper clipped together, are some job descriptions that Councilwoman Gump, um, asked to review. Um, just so you see what's in the packet there. These are things that we discussed last month um, in executive session regarding personnel. But on top is the job description for what was the combined AmeriCorps Program Director, Parks and Rec Director. Um, and then the next job description was what was the Assistant City Clerk um, that was last held by Julie. Um, and then the third job description in there is, um, the, the consolidated, since losing the AmeriCorps Program Director position, the consolidated Parks and Rec Director and Assistant City Clerk description. And then Debbie, you had also requested to see the city clerk description. I wasn't sure if that was a typo or intention. Okay.
The assistant clerk has taken from helping Judy out, because I think that was the plan, was to get Judy some help. And I just wanted to make sure we were following through with that.
Yeah, so I will say, right now, this position is not offering Judy very much help. Um, I think we're.
Beginning.
Well, and so a little, I guess a little bit of background. Um, Judy is getting the most help right now from the municipal fees clerk. Um, Kathy has shown a lot of capacity to get stuff done. Um, and so she's picked up a lot of helping Judy with the mail, helping Judy answer the phones. Um, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak for Judy's own perspective, but I think Kathy probably gets just as much done as any assistant city clerk has gotten done for Judy in the past while also doing municipal fees. Um, so she's been, she's, she has really increased the capacity in that role. Um.
So it's Kathy, is she, she's municipal corp, or municipal fees, right?
Yeah. And she has just shown a great amount of capacity to take work on.
Okay, so, but we get to first do in all those fees, she's not gonna be able to handle that, I don't think.
Well, so we're hoping, the, um, where we're, where we're taking the first due fees and eventually the municipal fees is, is towards a monthly billing. the first due fees and eventually the municipal fees is, is towards a monthly billing that is automated. So one of the things that makes municipal fee billing so challenging and time consuming is that it is completely hand entry. Um, so there's about twenty-five hundred residences in the city, and this last year we added vacant lots, um, so that added a couple hundred more parcels. Um, and every single one of those is billed by hand. And so, the, um, the, the time involved in just processing and printing the bills has been where most of that position is. And what we're moving towards is, uh, monthly billing with the click of a button. Um, so we click a button, send, you know, two thousand bills to the printer, um, and then build them out that way. So July first, we're still gonna have annual billing for municipal fees, um, in the city limits. Um, but we're kicking off first due immediately with the monthly billing. Um, so that's gonna take a lot of, a lot of that time off of that position, um, that you're not gonna have to go in and create a bill. Cause that's, that's what she's doing. She goes in and creates a brand new invoice manually for every single building, every single year. And so, we're, we're automating that, and that's gonna take a lot of that time off of there. So that's the, that's the, I mean, that's the intention for July first. Um, I think what that does increase, it obviously is payments. We do have a lot of people who set up payment plans already, so we already have folks who are paying um, a little bit throughout the year, but I think we anticipate we're gonna see more payments coming in. Um, but payments was something, payments, I don't wanna say they were never processed by the municipal fees clerk, but payments when they came in the mail, we usually process by the city clerk. Um, that's been something she's always processed, was the mail payments. Um, so that's another, that's another way that that role is kinda shifting towards more support of the city clerk.
But I do also know that Suzie also researched them, kept track of what everybody owed and tried to get that money.
Yeah.
As well.
Yeah.
So is Kathy gonna be able to do this?
Yeah, I think so. So far, I think she is, she is, like I said, she has shown a lot of capacity to get stuff done, and I think that she's, I'm, I'm trying to be delicate, but I think that she's, she's getting more done than anybody has in that position in the past.
Technicality.
Yeah.
Kathy should be municipal and slash city clerk, assistant city clerk.
I think functionally, that is what she is, yeah.
So then what we're left here for Laura is just Parks and Rec.
Well, so what? Sure.
I remember when Nate presented something like this about a year ago, and I'm pretty sure council said, we are not there yet, that we need a full-time position just for public relations to PR.
To take this to an executive session since we're speaking about
Well, I'm not, I'm talking about a position, I'm not talking about people. I'm talking about work duty.
Yeah, so. I think the, the things that we, if, if you look into this first job description, the things that are in there that are relevant to Assistant City Clerk were largely pieces that rightly belong in the city clerk's department, but haven't been picked up by anybody. Um, so one of those, for example, um, the clerk's department is charged with managing, um, communications from the city going outside the city. Um, and so that includes managing the social media accounts, um, and any sort of, you know, um, creation of flyers and those sorts of things, and that was the kinda stuff that we've just never had the capacity, um, to take that on. It's not something Judy really wants to do. Yeah, yeah, technically managing the website, um, by, by the definition of the term in the city charter, all that stuff falls into the city clerk's department, and it's just been stuff that we've kinda just juggled the best we could. Um, I think Judy has, you know, said that she's not gonna be the social media queen, and you know, we're fine with that, and don't expect her to be.
That's the new charter, or is that the one?
No, it just says outside communications. Says outside communication.
Yep.
Which is just inclusive of, you know, a lot of different things. Um, and so a lot of the Assistant City Clerk stuff that we are looking for this position to take on is stuff that we just haven't even tackled, really, in a wholesale way. But, like I said, I'm, I'm happy to have more discussion about it in the future. Really, this doesn't take effect until the middle of July, um, because the, we still have an AmeriCorps Program Director until the middle of July, because we're still in the closeout of that grant right now. So this is something that would have happened, uh, after that grant, grant closes out, which I think happens July seventeenth or something. Um, so there's still time to have discussion around it.
I'm not talking to anybody. I, I, you know, sure everybody remembers I did bring that up when Nate was here about that. So I don't know, uh, when I get back in the country, uh, I'm willing to come in and sit down, and I would also like to maybe have the current city clerk in there as well. See what other duties, you know, they help her out a little bit more, let's see.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think that's fine. Um, when, when, are you looking at, like a?
Be back in Lewis County on the eighteenth of June.
Okay. I'd say, I think, I think Judy's out for a couple of days, and then I think I'm out most of the next week. But we can find time to get together before the July meeting to discuss it. That's not a problem.
Now Kathy's doing really good for municipal fees, and I have taken, she takes the bills, her bills now, because she's, and I've taken them now back, and she does help answer the phones.
Well, I mean, just have somebody there helping answer the phones would be a great. I've been there when the phones go.
Anything else, Joe?
Um, no. That's all I have.
Okay, we entertain a motion to approve all department reports. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Seeing nothing under old business, we'll move on to new business prayer walk Tuesday, June seventeenth at Holt Park and Main Avenue.
Yeah, I think this group has done this a couple times, right Judy? Yeah. And it's come back, they'd like to do it again.
I move to approve the request for a prayer walk on June seventeen, twenty twenty-five, to be held at Holt Park and Main Street.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next, we have a request from the Neighborhood Watch for their annual picnic in the amount of four hundred dollars.
To add, this comes out of our city council fund that we have, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
What we have as a much budgeted, it's not a huge budget, but it comes out of our city council fund.
Descriptionary fund?
That we can, um, release that. And, um, I move to approve that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And also be known that anybody in the public is welcome to attend these picnics and events. And we appreciate them for doing these.
Consideration of business and occupational tax exemption request. Before we get into the weeds on this, I had a brief conversation with Councilman Curtis, and he would like to be present to weigh in on the discussion. I don't really know about Councilman uh, Stephen White, I would imagine he would as well. So I really would like to table this, if that's possible.
Well, that's actually more than possible, it's gonna be my recommendation, and I'll explain why. So, uh, I'll, I'll get into the weeds just a little tiny bit, um, which is to remind, to remind you that A.J. Burke came and requested a letter of support in the fall, um, to be exempt from sales tax in the state, uh, related to development. Um, but at that time, they were not seeking, uh, B and O tax exemption from the city. Um, now, they've done some development, and they do wanna do more development, and they're seeking B and O tax exemption. Um, and that's what that letter is, and therefore, um, I had to do some research over this on the weekend, over the weekend, and what I learned is that it will require an ordinance for the city to do that. Um, so it's gonna take an ordinance with two readings to honor the request of the letter, so you can't actually respond to just the letter today. Um, I'm gonna have to come back with an ordinance for your consideration. If, if you're interested, I was willing to entertain any thoughts you have about whether or not you how you feel about the ordinance or what your considerations are. Yeah, so the, the Build Act authorizes cities to pass an ordinance, um, that exempts construction of new development. And honestly, Ray might know more than I do. I'm not sure if it's limited to new development of residential facilities, or if it's a little bit broader than that. Um, but the Build Act authorizes cities, uh, to pass an ordinance, um, to exempt certain um, certain development activities from B and O taxes. Um, normally, you have to treat all activities in any given class the same. Um, and so this, this creates a carve-out exception, uh, so it would not, I'll say like, it would not zero out your B and O tax on contractors. Um, it would only make the exemption for, um, contractors that are operating under the Build Act um, on Build Act qualified, uh, development, yeah.
I think it's impressive what this contractor wants to do. I think it's impressive what he has already done. I think it, um, has the potential to build our population following people who are taxpaying citizens who contribute to our economy. So that's my thoughts.
Okay.
Do you have any thoughts you wanna share, Debbie?
We're taking care of blight in the city. Fighting, you know, nice housing, affordable, nice housing.
Relax housing.
I'll just add by saying that, of course, uh, the city needs the revenue to operate. However, uh, we're seeing the first new builds that we've seen in the city for several years. And that's, housing is like most sorely needed. And so I appreciate the fact that we have a developer who's interested in investing in Weston, and I think it's worth further discussion. We need to gauge the opinions of the other two councilmen, I feel.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'd like to schedule that for as soon as possible in a special session.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think that makes sense. If, if we wanna get it done in a timely fashion for them, then we probably wanna get it on a special session agenda, cause it's gonna take two readings. But I will recommend that you table it today, and I will get an ordinance ready, and I'll get it to you as soon as I can.
It's been moved in second to table. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, discussion of various properties in the city of Weston.
Yeah, so this was, um, Brian sent you an email about this. I think the two, two big questions that he has for council, um, one, the owner of the Kitsonville School has indicated an interest in, um, giving that property to the city. And he wants to gauge your interest in receiving that property. Um, and then the other thing is he's done some more research on lien foreclosures, um, and I think the thing that maybe he wanted to draw your attention to uh, is that the courts have this history of saying, before you foreclose on real estate, we will force the sale of personal property, um, to try to pay off the liens and things that the person owes on the real estate. And I mean, you could look at that as one of two ways. I think you can either say, well, it doesn't matter to us what they do, as long as we get paid. Um, or, uh, you know, there's, there's, I think, a, a, a PR challenge there if you take someone to court over a property they have a lien against, and the court starts telling them that they have to sell their car and auction their personal belongings and that sort of thing to pay that lien off. Um, so I think he wanted to gauge your interest in reception of the Kitsonville School, and also in pursuing foreclosure of liens. Given the new context he understands.
Well, it's just discussion.
Yeah.
So I think we're good.
Thank you.
Okay, next, reports of city council. I did not bring my May calendar with me, but it was full of meetings the month of May uh, and conferences, the West Virginia Land Use Summit at Pipestem and the Municipal League Board Meeting. Don't really have anything exciting to share, other than the new toolkit that was made available through WVU. That I'll share with the Land Reuse Agency and Marty. It's a pretty nice, um, brochure that they've come up with.
Well, a lot to thank everyone for all of their hard work. I feel that we're moving forward. Um, we've made a lot of improvements over the last few years, and I really appreciate it. Appreciate our post responders, especially, and, um, actually all of the employees that have to deal with these recent storms. I know it's certainly a challenge, and you're probably tired, I'm, I'm sure. Um, but you're right there when, when we need you, and I appreciate that. Also, Councilman Curtis isn't here, but I'd like to congratulate him on his, um, newest business.
Today was the first day.
First day that he was opening, and we wish him the best with his new doors. Flowers are all down downtown, except dealing with the weather and and replacement of flowers. Um, we really haven't had any vandalism, to speak of, I'm sorry. I know, with the flowers, like flowers downtown, but, um, we did set up, um, some tables and chairs over by the glass museum, so we encourage families to, uh, melt and maybe, um, after dinner, have a little picnic and enjoy downtown Weston.
Were some of those gonna go in front of businesses too, or?
No. They, Marty went and measured, and there's a specific measurement and dimension that, and those were unfortunately too large. However, a couple of those will go, um, behind the city with, um, building, or a nice little area over there.
Okay.
So not all of them are going to stay. But as far as the bistro sets, well, um, that sweet espresso does have to be special ordered, and, um, any other businesses would like those out in front, so they can talk with us. There are a couple of refinements they should have to meet. Of course, they've been standing with the city as far as all of their.
Are they purchasing those, or are we purchasing them?
We are, and there's a, there's an agreement.
That it, Sherri?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Word three.
Word three. Uh, again, thank you to everybody. I appreciate all your hard work. Um, a couple of things, I'd also, uh, once again, like to thank Lindsay for all of her work, and I, I do pray for you out there, working and what you're doing is not only work, but it's also a ministry of helping these people to find a better met in their lives and to, uh, recover some maybe of things that they're addicted to. So I really appreciate all your hard work, and I will say that people I work with are also noticing what you're doing too, so we appreciate you. It is summertime, and I'd like to encourage people to maybe, you know, do a little freshening up of their homes, maybe a little paint, little pressure washing would be great. Keeping your properties from debris and junk, and it really helps your neighbors out, and it also increases the value of your home, so I encourage people to do, take advantage of the nice weather and do that. For people listening out there, um, we do have job openings. I think you've heard a couple of those mentioned tonight with the police department and possibly the street department, so if you're looking for employment, the city of Weston is hiring. Uh, so come in and put in an application. the city of Weston is hiring. So come in and put in an application. I'd also like to encourage people to attend the farmer's market. I know the weather hasn't been cooperative the past couple of farmer markets, but it is some really good stuff, and that will be Friday at six o'clock. I also like to encourage people to come to the Neighborhood Watch at the Fire Department on six, at six o'clock. Our mayor is providing the hot dogs and supper for that evening. I'm providing dessert. So I encourage you guys to, to do that and take advantages. I'm not sure what the status is on the carp fishing. Are we?
Yeah.
Okay. Carp fish, make sure you get out there and do that over the weekend, right? I don't have Facebook, I'm sorry, I'm kind of struggling here.
Snuck up on me too. Yeah, you're right.
Good luck to all our fishermen out there. And with that, I'd like to move to adjourn.
Is that a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you all.
Record.